Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, October 3rd, 2022. At 6:00 PM, and I will call to order the Free Town Board Stock Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on our town YouTube page. So I will kick things off with meeting minutes from 9:22, 2022. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 9:22, 2022.
Motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda item 2 is discussion of going reviewing, revising, and breaking current leases into one agreement per organization for the use of the town-owned ball fields, designation of the project to the town administration to work with town council. So I think...
Yes.
Matt, you're here for this?
I am.
Why don't you just, yeah, just announce your name and where you live for the record?
Sure. Matt Salent, I live on 12 Beach Street in Assunan. I moved to the town to raise a family and moved in 2007. So now I have three girls and I'm a member of the board for softball and for soccer. So I try to be active in the community.
Well, it's good to represent both those towns, yeah. Needs to be a little more objective, right?
So, yeah, there's no soccer fields in all of Free Town. So all of our, we are a Free Town-Lakeville soccer club, but there's no fields in all of Free Town. So all of our people have to drive all the way to Lakeville. And of course, if you ask Lakeville people, they have to drive, they don't want to drive all the way here, but it goes both ways. And so I'm volunteering my time and I end up driving 20 minutes each way to go to Lakeville, just like all the other residents.
Yeah.
So it'd be really nice to bring soccer back to Free Town. But we did the same thing with the, there's a softball field at KRR.
Yeah.
We renovated that and brought softball back. And we had our first softball games, our first home softball games in Free Town last spring. So we held like four home games at KRR at the 8U level, and it was good.
And I've been told that there is space that can be used for a soccer field back at KRR, right?
Correct.
That's what it is.
From when we were doing the building at the softball field and renovating that, we worked closely with Resendis. And he said that that bear carrier there, he designed it with the crown and everything as soccer fields. It was originally intended to be soccer fields. So I'm hoping to bring life to that.
Yeah, it's kind of all been overgrown now, probably some work, but...
We've maintained the trimming so that there's no trees growing and everything else over the years.
Yeah.
But most of the time, we have like one or two feet of hay, almost hay grass, just because you're not going to sit there and cut, you know, put a football, four soccer fields back there. So there's a lot of grass to cut for no reason.
Now, that makes sense to me. And so I know Carlos, you're involved in this as well, right? Obviously, you know. So I think that for me, it does make sense to kind of relook at all the leases and make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and move forward that so that all of our kids, regardless of what sports they play, all have access to, you know, great facilities.
Right. Well, if you remember back in February, you guys had a meeting with football and baseball. And so Long Pond is definitely all football. So FLAA is saying, hey, football. Obviously, FLA has the here at Central Park, and they also have the lease at KRR. Of course, one of them, that's where it all started, softball field mark, to get a sublease, get away from sublease and just give them the lease themselves so that they can just control the lease. So there's no feeling of, oh, I'm going to show up one day, my field's being used.
Yeah.
So same thing with the other fields. So right now, there are Free Lake, CISA, and then Field Hockey that wants to use that same field. So that's the discussion really to be had. So bringing it back, absolutely, it's a waste of space. It's designed for it, but there's also competing sports that want to use it. So the question I've proposed to the other board is, you have a Bayou field and a T-ball field not being used on the right side. Can that be converted as well into a larger field, like a 4-on-1 use similar to that area? So instead of having one field for just soccer, you have two joining fields doing the same thing. So that's the discussion in the background.
And I think that, to your point, is that something that we allow Debbie to work with so that way they can, you know, baseball has this beautiful central location, football has that, you know, whoever can have the other side, and that's something she can work on, and then everyone has their own piece, right? And that they feel proud to take care of and keep on.
Correct. We started this process back in June, right? Is that when we started looking at these things?
Yeah, but nothing kind of ever came to fruition.
Well, we got busy with the town.
No, no, I listen, trust me. It's not digging anyone, I'm just saying that this will help move it forward by allowing Debbie to kind of take the reins on it.
I think for me, the clarification I need is, do we want, currently FLAA has a lease, but I read the lease and it looks like it by nature could have expired because it wasn't actively renewed when I read the legal lease. And so we can get town council to weigh in on that. But regardless, do we want to have FLAA with one encompassing umbrella of a lease and all these subleases? Or do we want to have subleases to each individual sport? And then how will we regulate them? Because as it stands now, I think the lease is called for maintenance. And for the most part, I know the town pretty much, we do cut all of the grass, pretty much all of the fields right now. Chuck, he just does it, you know, he just gets it done.
Yeah, and I think that...
There's a KRR and the Little Pond.
I think that more of, if they each have their own piece, right, they're going to take greater pride in it, and then you won't have Chuck wasting as much time there, right? I say wastes, waste is a terrible word to use, and that's it. But Chuck won't be focusing his hours, his man-hours on those pieces, right? Softball has their space, soccer has their space, they'll all make sure they take pride in their spot, right? So I don't want to see, and no offense, Carlos, I don't want to see like one umbrella group that oversees all these other groups.
I agree. Oh, no, I completely agree with that.
So I think it's having them break it apart.
Right. And so I would want FLAA just to agree to that as well, like they should have a meeting and agree, because obviously, I mean, there can be an argument made that they have a parent lease, right? And you can't break their lease without them saying, okay.
They got like four or five years left on them.
And then what then becomes the question is, we have competing soccer people that want it. So now, how do we facilitate which soccer people? Or, I mean, I think we just have one softball, we have one football association. So then, but we have multiple soccer people that have come to us. And then, of course, Field Hockey is new, but maybe there can be a shared field. Field Hockey and soccer, I'm not sure. I don't know the details of what it takes to have those fields. So that's, for me, where the conundrum comes. Who do we give the lease to? Who does the town lease it to?
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Well, if there's only one thing that, I mean, what I would think would take precedence is like the Free Town-Lakeville Youth Soccer, which is the nonprofit for our town that our residents go and play in. So the other organization, I'm not sure if they're necessarily nonprofit, or do they necessarily are Free Lake and they're for the town of Free Town?
They're all, so to clarify, they're all nonprofits.
What's the other one?
So CISA is the Southeast Soccer Academy, fairly new, it's, I think...
That's the one that came in front of us. And they told us they were not nonprofit.
And they got their nonprofit status.
Okay, they were full profit at that point. So that's why I'm happy with saying that.
And the, what's it called, Field Hockey is new. That's just came up a couple of weeks ago. So I'm asking for the same information to provide so we can start looking at it.
And I guess that part of it would come to, we don't even know their needs, right? So we say, okay, softball means these two fields, you know, to the point was brought up that for the right-hand side, we now have open space. So how do we divide, yeah, how do we divide that space off? And then we have the field all back. So there's a lot of stuff that can be decided, but I think at this point, it's more about giving Debbie the right to move forward.
Yes, I don't think we're going to solve these problems, especially without a representative, but I think that Debbie could take care of this, kind of her own.
I do have a one question.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
Free Town-Lakeville Soccer, so you're already established and you're paying, but you're playing in Lakeville because there is no field.
Correct.
Similar to what the softball was prior.
Correct.
So this would just be giving you almost equal access between the two towns?
Correct.
Because it is a joint team between Free Town and Lakeville. I don't know if Carlos can answer this, but is it that true that the association pays Lakeville rent?
Well, yes.
So that's just something, because somebody has said to me, they have to pay rent in Lakeville to equalize, they should have to pay rent in Free Town, but we have never charged for that. And I'm not advocating for that necessarily, but that discussion may want to come to the light because I don't know the details of it all.
So the background to that, you're correct. So Lakeville, Free Lake, FLAA, I'm sure Free Lake Soccer does as well. When, before they combined years ago, about eight, nine years ago, they merged together to create the Free Lake organization. Before it was FFAA, whatever, since then it's FLA, then Free Lake, kind of the same thing for soccer. So they pay about $3,500, $4,000 a year to Lakeville, just the baseball. I don't know what the soccer is. I coach there, I'm not on the board.
Right.
But I'm sure it's similar. But I very, I very reached out to the board, the commissioner over at Lakeville, sent an email regarding, to see what we can do to either remove that stipend or remove it completely or reduce it, because we don't pay here in Free Town. Because the way they do it is like, you don't break the field, they just cut the grass, and then baseball does everything else, from fixing the bases, fixing the field itself, changing light bulbs. So it's a very fine line of what they actually do for that $4,000. So an email's been sent, I'm just waiting to hear back. It's probably on their agenda meeting for their board of select, I'm not sure yet, so...
Yeah. I just wanted to bring that to light, so I'm not advocating for that. And if we did collect it, I would think we'd want to put the money right back into the field and the spots anyway.
All right. But yeah, those are the details we'll have to figure out. So I guess with that, so I will entertain a motion to vote to have Debbie, I guess, review the breaking of the current lease into agreement per organization for the use of town-owned ball fields and designation of this project for her to take care of. I said that really poorly. And for her to work with town council.
I will make the motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So does that work, Debbie, we good there?
It does, yeah.
Just, because I think we have an information finding mission, kind of make sure, get all the players, not the physical sports players, but the people involved.
And then we'll come back to the board.
Yeah, exactly. So I just can't, you know...
A more clarified spot.
Yeah.
And then it will be who's going to pay to clean the field.
Okay. So next, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the agreement between town and Free Town and Full Circle Technology for online permitting. So I read through this contract. It is, seems like it'd be a great step forward for us, and I think will lead to us to digitalize and automate a lot of the different permitting processes that we currently have, which I think historically have been very manual in nature. It is, you know, pretty expensive, but I think we have this already built into the budget.
This was in an article at June special town meeting.
Yep, that's right. So it looks like at first, right, what's going to be for the Board of Building Department, Board of Health, you know, all those different permits that are required, inspections, you know, things of that nature. Any questions or concerns on this?
No. No, I think this is what the max total year one is, $20,000, $4,000, $2,000, $5,000.
Right. It's cost so much to install it, and then there's an annual fee. So I, that $20,000 is like a portion of the annual fee plus the installation cost. And that's just for Building Department. You know, the learning curve is going to be steep, so we're going to do one department at a time, but ultimately, the whole town should be connected by an online permitting system. So if it needs to move from Building to Board of Health, it can do it electronically. You can pay electronically, so you don't, you know, if you come in and, you know, we have one person in each department, and if that department's closed because that person's all sick, you can still operate and file for a permit and pay for it online. So that just gives a lot more access to the residents to work around, you know, at their pace, at their schedule.
Yeah. It's a no-brainer. And then it looks like for the contract, they provide the project managers, right? Are they provide a project manager?
They'll send somebody down, install it all, give us training. There's a lot of training. And we vetted three different companies, myself and Jeff from, you know, the Building Commissioner, NDA Dean, and then hopefully we brought in Kevin because the next department will be the Board of Health. We looked at three different companies, and we felt like this was the best one for the town based on what it can do. It's pretty amazing stuff.
Yeah, seems really interesting.
And they have a state contract, so didn't need to go out for procurements.
Perfect.
That's where we're at.
All right, great. All right, so with that, so actually, any other discussion? No? All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between town and Free Town and Full Circle Technology for online permitting.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now, yeah, Jared's refused himself. So Jared's related to one of the people who placed a bid, so he's refusing himself. Went to, walks outside. Okay. So now is the, going to award the master site plan feasibility study bid. And so we got three different bids in. Get to the right page here.
Yeah, they're very detailed.
I know. It took me a long time to look through this there. So GCG Associates came in at $28,740, Consulting came in at $49,000, and GPI came in at $58,200. Obviously, some big discrepancies between those bids. I did speak, reached out to Debbie, we spoke about this, just to make sure that these bids were referencing all the same thing. And it looks like GCG, they use some technology that allows them to kind of come in a lot cheaper. So that makes sense to me.
That's the one with drone, right?
Yeah, they use drones and, yeah.
I checked their references, and I spoke to the company to make sure that they had the scope of work correctly, and they had a very good understanding of what we needed, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah. And this is going to be the survey of all of the town-owned kind of land around this areas mostly, for looks into our, building some sort of, some sort of centrally located facility at some point. So yeah, if they meet all the criteria, and they are a lot cheaper, can't argue with that.
Can't argue with that at all.
So with that, I will, I guess I'll entertain a motion to award the master site plan feasibility study bid to CGC Associates.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes care of item four.
Would you like to do seven?
We're going to do seven at the same time while Jared's... All right, so now, we got the agreement in today, and it all looks good. You agree with that? So, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between town and Free Town and CGC Associates for the master plan feasibility study bid.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think Jared can come back now.
Rock. He did never step on a saw. So you don't have to go back there.
We saved some steps.
I appreciate that, guys.
Okay, next, agenda item five is the award for the painting of the exterior for the Village Schoolhouse building, but we have some open questions on this, so I think we're going to table this until the next meeting. Does everyone care at that?
I need to get one here, please.
So five. I'm trying to think, is there any other? I don't think there is, right?
No.
Okay. So agenda item six is the feasibility study of town buildings bid. And we only got one bid for that? So that makes it pretty easy. I did look through the, what they provided, it looks good.
They are also the ones that did the 2014 feasibility study, which is why they were able to probably come in and come in within our budget.
That makes sense? And probably makes everyone's life a little bit easier? Okay. Any questions?
No.
No, it's pretty full.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to award the feasibility study of town buildings bid to Architectural Consulting Group.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will just say one thing, that unfortunately, the timeline is through like next summer.
I mean, that doesn't really surprise me though.
I know, but I was hoping it would be quicker, but just to let you know.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully they have the designs from 2014 and some of the things they can just say, nothing's changed there.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, I don't think a lot of things have changed yet.
Probably not. Other than this building.
Yeah, this building, that's a good change. So agenda item eight related, so once again, we got the agreement today. So this is, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between town and Free Town and Architectural Consulting Group for the feasibility study of town buildings.
I will make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so agenda item nine is to review the UMass Collin Center organizational study and discuss the next steps. So I had opportunity to look through that today. I think it was a critical but fair, you know, results, I guess. I agree with everything they said just about. I think that we have been taking actions to mitigate, you know, some of the issues and also, you know, trying to, where does it start? Page?
212.
I have it right.
231.
Page 231. Yeah, so, I mean, I think that, like, so I guess, I mean, I'll go through the findings real quick, you know, not digging too deep, but just to, so one of the findings, department budgets are underflooded and critical staffing needs. And the critical staffing has tampered the town's ability to further professionalize services of the town residents. And they also provided all of our budgets compared to like 13 other comparable towns, and we were below on everything. I don't think that's a shocker. I think we knew that. The second one, and they also gave some recommendations, which I know that we're working on, you know, of having a floater, clerical staff, you know, critically evaluate all the department's duties, that's something that we've talked about and are working on. Establishing a human resource professional, another thing, there's an article for that. So like a lot of these things, we are already kind of working on, but I think that, I guess big picture, I think that these findings should be kind of our guiding light, like having this third party. I think what is important, that we, I think, all know these things, but to have a third party come in and come to the same conclusions, you know, I think it just gives it a little more weight.
Absolutely. It prepares you for the future as well. As the town grows, this study helps you grow properly within budget, within proper staff. That way, you can have the proper people in place, so...
And they have the experience of other towns, right, working with other towns and seeing the way that other towns are doing things versus, you know, we're all focused in on Free Town. So I think it's, you know, it's just a high opening, I guess, to a certain extent.
Oh, it's a great break. It was, I liked it.
Also, some other recommendations that stood out to me were, you know, they recommend establishing a separately appointed Board of Health, which I, you know, it's obviously, yep. And then, you know, adding a more vertically, kind of a vertical hierarchy, where right now, we're very horizontal, where, you know, we don't have many layers of management, which kind of leads to, I think, our, the town administrative staff and her staff kind of working on a lot of stuff that, you know, in a thing that traditional town situation they might not be working on. And luckily, we have the hardest-working folks around.
Absolutely.
I think that's something we need to really consider and figure that out. Also, this is not a shocker, is that there's critical space limitations, and we know we're working on that. We have on our agenda item today is talking about the bank, which will alleviate some of those issues. So that's something we have in motion. And also, you know, there was lots, lots about the library situation, which I think we're all well aware of. And we are working, obviously, on that as well. Some good news, though, that, you know, they did mention that we're in really good financial shape, which is great, and our rating is very high from standards and poor. And they did, you know, mention kind of what we're really good at doing more with less, which I think, you know...
Right, yeah. That was obvious. The clear thing I took away from that was, we do a lot. You know, we have a lot of roles in our departments, and, which is something we've had to do over the years, but that study tells us we need to start branching out and start hiring a little bit more.
So I think that we kind of need to take this, really break it down, and have action items that come from that, you know, show where we are in progress on some of these items already, and just, you know, something that we reference maybe at least quarterly to see what we're, what we're doing to try to mitigate some of these issues. And what I'd love to be able to do is in a couple of years, have them come back in and do another analysis and see what, you know, where we compare to Denver, you know?
Yeah. See if we've got up with the times a little bit more.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't think, do we need to vote for that, or? I think that's kind of just...
Yeah, it's just the review.
Yeah.
And you, and you want us to publish this?
So I do think that it's important for the folks in town to see this, because, I mean, I think it might bring to light like the reason why we're focusing on some things. And you know, at the end of the day, we do have to ask for money from the folks to fund a lot of these, these items, but, you know, I think that this kind of supports a lot of our requests and why we're asking for these things. Okay, moving on. Next is the, to the charge of the Council on Aging Library and Community Building Committee. So I had no issues with the language there. Should we read that maybe aloud, like, be useful? There was, I know Debbie and I spoke earlier about, you know, how this...
So how the logistics of this...
Yeah, exactly, sorry.
...was created, so it was created and then...
Thank you.
In the past, I think committees have been created without necessarily a charge of what their authority is or isn't. And I'm coming in and I'm trying to find out, but what do they have the authority to do? What are they charged with? I ask, like, okay, you create this committee, what is it charged with? So I wanted this committee to be created and have a charge, so we're all on the same page. One of the things that have, we've been back and forth about is, we have a building committee, and the building committee is, of course, there's no written charge, right? But over the years, it's been charged with working on new buildings and whatnot. And the police, you know, Police Station Committee was a subcommittee of the building committee. So people started all on the building committee, went to the Police Station Subcommittee. So we're creating this Subcommittee of Library and COA seniors personnel, but it's not necessarily a Subcommittee because not all these members are on the building committee. So the question came up on whether we appoint these people to the building committee first and create therefore a Subcommittee of the building committee. Therefore, there is not two simultaneous building committees in action.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we have an answer to that, but that was what came up at the 11th hour today, that possibly the issue arises is now that we might have 25 people on the building committee, right? So to get a quorum from the building committee, you've got to have 13, 14, 15 people present, and that's when having more on a committee can...
Camper.
Yeah. So I'm not sure that that's...
And then if you have people that are on both, how does that work?
There are some of them that are already, like, I think Paul Stadig's on the building committee.
Exactly. That's who I saw, I mean, to think of it.
He's the only one I'm sure, I'm sure they may have to tell us who's on the building committee, but that's a sort of a procedural decision that the board needs to make on how they want to set it up. And I don't know that I have a preference for one way or the other. I can always go to town council with this and say, hey, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm not sure if on a 25-member building committee, that's a lot of people trying to get a hold of them. No, it's, it's, I was just thinking aloud, right? It's like, we have, what, twenty-five people, you say?
I'm guessing, but, I'm guessing. Do you know what it is currently in the building committee?
I haven't confronted me. Are we counting the sub-police? It's like their members, the police subcommittee is that not disbanded yet, though? Or would I count them?
Well, I guess the question was, are, are all of the people on the police subcommittee also on the building committee by, or is, or is it too separate?
That's how it was set up, that they were on the building committee. It says building and police subcommittee.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you're looking at. There's twelve that are just strictly building committee and five more.
So you already have six.
So we have a seventeen, so if we had, I don't know how many of these people are not already on the building committee, but a good handful of them are not. So if we, yeah, if we had another, we might be at twenty-five.
And then, to your point, all right, well, what if they're, they're trying to have a meeting, the building committee's trying to have a meeting that doesn't have anything in regards to the police station or this new project and no one wants to show up for me the one, they already won't have a quorum.
Yeah, that, I mean, the question though, like, could you structure it in a way that if the, this new building is not on the agenda, the form requirements are different or not?
Probably not, probably not. I don't know that, I've seen that down in municipal world.
Yeah, I, I.
That's our answer.
Because then you can't also do something where they're shorter term, because then what if this project takes longer? Now all of a sudden we're trying to, you know, reappoint them again in, in between. So in other words, I'm saying, right, yeah, we can't do like a six-month appointment to these people, so that way it's only six months, because it won't be enough time. So they're going to have to be on there for probably a three-year term, right? So, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be tough to get that many people to, to like to get a quorum. I do like the idea, though.
I.
Yeah, I can vet it a little bit more.
But if that's a good, so what, what do you want to table? I mean, we could still, I think that this is important, right? What did the charges?
Yeah.
We can, we can prove that today, but to actually vote on the, on the people to want to just wait, I mean, if it's one more meeting.
Yeah.
Is that, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, exactly. That's, you know, knowing what that, that information is changes what the committee looks like, right? So having that answer, instead of just kind of appointing people today and say, hey, by the way, never mind, council gave some other information, we can't do this, we can't do that. I don't want to go backwards.
Too many times.
Yeah, yeah. And this just came up last minute today, so we didn't have that anxious. But I, I think regardless, I feel comfortable going forward with the, at least the charge, because I think that does make sense. So I'll just read the charge real quick. So it's, uh. And I'll lead up the top part, because this might even change, right? But the top part is, so, so, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Selectmen established the Council on Aging slash Library Community Building Committee. The committee will consist of eleven members, three, um, library representatives, three council agent representatives, and four at-large members and one selectman. This may be modified in the future to actually just depict the way we structured this. So we're not voting on that part, we're going to vote on just the charge below.
Well, that was only what happens.
Yeah, exactly what, yeah, you're right. So this is, uh, so the Council on Aging slash Library Community Building Committee was formed to create a combined Council on Aging slash Library facility to meet the existing and future needs of the residents of the town of Freetown. The committee will work collaboratively with the project manager and architect to develop final design of the building that will meet the critical needs of the COA and library. Once this architectural design is approved, the committee will oversee the building projects, select specific aspects of the building project, i.e. flooring, paint colors, kitchen cabinets, et cetera, meet with the project manager to ensure the construction stays within the appropriate budget. The committee will keep the building committee and Board of Selectmen updated on the status of the project. Anyone, everyone good with that language?
Yes, the only thing obviously is this is, if, and at this point it has it almost so that the building committee is separate. If it comes together, then I don't know how much it even really matters. It's more about the charge of what they're going after.
Part of the thought process was that this subcommittee, you know, would work on the design of the building, but then that ultimate design would come back to the building committee and the selectmen for approval, you know, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. And the appropriated budget, that would be something obviously set by the, the selectmen and the townspeople, depending on where we're at with that, right? Because we need to get that approved and say, okay, there, you know, that would have to come back through this board and, and probably town meeting. So, um, other than those two things, it just gave, it just kept a little bit of control for building slash.
No, that makes sense.
So that you can keep in check with it, basically.
Yeah. All right, that's fine. So I think we'll just to get this more on, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the charge, the, sorry, the, Council on Aging slash, um, Library Community Building Charge.
I will make that motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next, agenda item eleven, discussion of vote on which company to use for clothing, textiles, and shoes, Planet Aid or CMRK. So this is related to transfer station. And this is going to be on page?
Two sixty.
Sixty?
I was looking for price, it's right at the top.
And let's say we got a recommendation. Uh, from Victoria. And, um, yeah, so she represents, uh, CMRK. They have some local, um, community affiliations, which Planet Aid did not. And there's no, CMRK has, um, they can, you can arrange pickup, where that is not the case in Planet Aid. So, um, and also Planet Aid does no bulk, bulky items accepted while CMRK does small bulky items picked up. So it seems.
And they're both the same price, right? So what, what they do charge for, they're.
Sorry, I shouldn't mention that. I shouldn't mention that. But that didn't say it out loud, right? The same exact price, but it seems we got a little more service. So.
But it's, um, the way I was explaining to me is it's not a price, it's what they pay us.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Look at that, see, you speak and they go.
Look at Victoria, great timing.
I said, they might get to me early.
You know, I keep a fast meeting. So.
Am I up?
Yeah, you are up, but I mean, I think we, we kind of discussed it, you know, just, I guess confirming your, uh, recommendation of CMRK?
Yes, and also she'd like to put other containers in the, beside the transfer, maybe COA by a station. I told her, let's just get in the door first.
Okay, yeah.
So, but no, she is, she's very resourceful. She just, uh, appointed to the Board of Directors of, uh, they annoy me, Recycle Smart.
Okay.
For DEP, so.
So they actually pay us seven cents.
They are, but they pay about.
I thought, I thought it was the opposite, I thought we paid.
Shocking.
I know.
Fantastic.
And like, I'm not dissatisfied with the other company.
Yeah.
But the whole thing was the swap shit. That overflow goes into bulky, the prices are up, so that's lost revenue for us. This way she'll take it, we'll get some revenue from it. She'll take everything, but we're in a job.
All right.
So I said, I thought it was a win-win.
Sounds like it to me. All right, appreciate you doing the research on this and giving, I appreciate you doing the research on this and, uh, giving us your opinion and your recommendation. So with that, so, um, I'll entertain a, um, a motion to choose, uh, CMRK for, uh, use of the clothing, textiles, and shoes.
Transfer station.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You like that?
I like it.
Thanks for coming back.
Perfect time. Perfect. My dog, we're going to be confused.
All right, so next is to approve the library trustee's request to accept a restricted donation with the terms a donor put in place. And this is, um. Okay. Donor wish to stay as, stay anonymous? I just read that. All right? Yeah, I looked this over, don't see any issues with it?
Yeah, it's great.
Uh, obviously greatly appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
All right? No questions?
No, this is amazing, this is an amazing thing to have, so, win-win.
All right, so with that, so I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve the library trustee's request to accept a restricted donation with the terms a donor has put in place.
All right, we'll make that motion?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, agenda item thirteen, is the vote to use the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, monies to fund the digital frequency for the new fire department radios in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. So this is to make the, at the fire station, um, I know right now they're analog frequency. This is going to allow the ability for them to go digital at some point and, and we can use ARPA money to facilitate that, to kind of build that infrastructure, which I think it makes sense.
Absolutely.
And also I learned, so you better went digital, obviously it's really important where our neighboring communities are. I know Farver's still analog, but I'm sure that they'll have to go in digital.
Yeah, at some point, they're all going to change over at some point. It may take ten years, but at least this, this will keep us in place with everybody else and be ready for the future.
And so it's nice when you can use ARPA money for things of this nature. Uh, so is that good? Any discussion?
No, all, all positive.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to use the ARPA monies to fund the digital frequency for the new fire department radios in the amount of seventy thousand dollars.
I will make that motion, second bid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. So next is, uh, discussion on the former Saint and Dear Bank, Saint and Dear Bank space at the Town Hall Annex. I know we all got an opportunity to go check out that bank space. I think it will meet our needs, or at least it allows some very much needed additional space and parking. It kind of alleviates a lot of the things mentioned in the Collins Center, uh, you know, review we got. So, have you, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, logistically, obviously, there's still a lot to figure out about who goes where and how, what, but the space itself, I think, has a lot of upside, right? To your point, the parking, the, just the space itself, the way it's laid out, um, you know, the landlord's willing to do some stuff, from what I'm understanding, right? That would, as far as how things can, like, we can do some stuff inside the building to make it make more sense for us, right?
Yeah, um, actually, he, he will have to do what I do.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have said that, that way, that, because we can't go in there spending money to, you know, redo the inside of a building that doesn't belong to us, so, um, so, you know, obviously, I guess inevitably you have to see what the townspeople think of it, but, um, personally, I think it's a, a great opportunity.
Right, and one of my thought process was, you know, because we have great competing needs, I, that, that's a great customer-facing spot, um, and we have a couple of departments that have a lot of foot traffic, a lot of customer-facing interactions, um, so, but there's also a lot of internal flow that goes on at the town hall, so that has to be brought into the discussion. So my thought was to reach out to the Collins study, the people that just did the study, and maybe ask them if they could weigh in on the, what would make the most sense, or the people that are doing the building feasibility study. Um, we got some, uh, earmarked money for, uh, that, we're going to have a little bit of door that I might be able to pay for a separate study for that to just, to give us some insight of what, from an outside point of view, makes the most sense, right? You know, with, you know, talent park, tax collector, which, you know, the, the drive-through window possibly for tax collection, um, or even building, want to help, they're very customer-facing, right? There's a lot of foot traffic, so, uh, there will be a lot of discussions that need to happen.
Yeah, that's the big, tough part is that I think every, almost everyone has a good case for it, they should.
The good news is by. The good news is by moving one department and, and, um, and possibly one and maybe a smaller one, but moving one department with three employees alleviates some parking in our parking lot, you know, we have twenty-four employees and eighteen spots, um, will give the residents more parking, because there's more parking, da-da-da-da-da thing, but it will free up some space within the town hall for the departments that are overcrowded to spread out a little bit. So it, so it, it may be, it may be a win-win for a lot of departments.
And, and, and like, it was in good shape, too, just when I walked in there, you know, obviously it's a cleaning up and, and to be organized, but like, everything seems to be in good shape generally. Looks like a fine working environment, you know?
Yeah.
Two bathrooms.
Drive-through, the tax through drive-through.
Yeah, so, all right.
So I just wanted to have the board discuss that, make sure that you wanted to move forward.
I definitely, I think we do definitely want to move forward with it and it's, it's, you know, it's an article, right, for that town meeting, so let's hope that, uh, the town agrees. Okay, agenda item fifteen, we're going to skip this, requires a hearing. Agenda item sixteen is to approve the Excel complaints protocols and procedures. So I can read these, the procedures. So, and these, yeah, obviously these have not been communicated yet, so, um, so in an effort to streamline and effectively monitor complaints regarding Excel Recycling LLC, the town of Freetown asks residents to follow these steps. Uh, to report complaints regarding Excel Recycling LLC, please follow these steps. So if it's an emergency, obviously call nine-one-one. Uh, to log a complaint with Excel Recycling LLC directly, call the Excel Recycling LLC hotline, which is five zero eight two one three three five seven zero, um, and email excel@info@excelrecycling.com. To log a complaint with the town of Freetown, so call the Excel complaint line, which is seven seven four two five six two two nine five. So now this line is not staffed, but it is checked and reviewed periodically. So these calls are transferred to, um, text to auto-forward to the Excel complaints@freetownma, sorry, freetownma.gov email. And, um, and so that, that email is also sent directly to the town administrator's office, right?
Yeah, that's our, our, that is our email, so if you make a phone complaint, it will, change the, the wording, put it into an email format and send it.
Yeah.
And, you know, so they don't always come out clear and, you know, so we're going to have to go back and listen to some of them, but.
But it'll at least give you a general idea of what the complaint is.
Yeah, and I guess the final part here is that, so the review of all complaints to the town will be done quarterly by the town administrator, building commissioner, and Board of Health Agent. An update will be provided to the Board of Selectmen after, uh, these quarterly reviews. So we're made aware of all the complaints that go through.
So, yeah, I guess, some background on this, obviously, we know what's going on with Excel, we'll leave, sit down, Board of Health Agent, myself, and the building commissioner, and at that time, I think also George Pucci, town council, I mean, trying to come up with a way to, um, keep accurate records of the complaints. Um, we will only be reviewing them probably on a monthly basis when I sit down with the two, um, department heads, we'll go through them. We'll also bring, just to let you know that a Board of Health Agent didn't come tonight, but he gave me his protocol, so I, if you don't mind, I'll read that.
Yeah, please.
So the, the Board of Health, um, Agent is, when he receives a complaint, um, it can be an email, written letter, or phone message. Uh, the person making the complaint does not need to give their personal information, but it is helpful for follow-up. The Board of Health Office has a complaint form that they use for all complaints. Typically, someone from our office can be on-site, but in our, but it usually is less than fifteen minutes. After a site visit, we usually try to touch base with the concerned party to let them know what we found. The office will then reach out to the company to let them know that they received the complaint, and we ask that they remediate the situation. In instances where another department's involvement is needed, we will contact that department and forward all relevant materials. They memorialize the complaint and follow-up. We place a copy of the complaint in a separate file on the computers. So when we, we're going to be meeting monthly, the Board of Health is bringing me their complaints, we have our.
That go directly to them.
That go directly to them and that they follow up.
Because I can see a resident not knowing.
Right.
An internal complaint that is related to this, so.
Yeah, like, they call for the, you know, maybe an odor or problem or something, and they go to the Board of Health or some health issue, and then he follows up and does his protocol. He will be bringing those to me on a monthly basis, obviously this is a more immediate need, and we will be reviewing them at this, these, um, monthly meetings with the, the department heads. At some point, these meetings may, we may open them up to the public for comment, um, and also to Excel, so that they can see what we have. Our email is also forwarded to Excel, so they're also getting the complaints, uh, lifetime as we're getting the complaints. So, um, that's how our email is set up, to be auto-forwarded to Excel's hotline and their, their, um, info email address. So that's, uh, what we're doing at this point. And then at those meetings, we'll be discussing further protocols in terms of testing and whatnot, and how we're going to continue to, um, mitigate any issues with Excel.
That makes sense. Any comments, concerns?
No, um, the chance more of my concerns was that making sure that the residents have a chance to know what's going on, right? Full disclosure, full transparency with them, make sure that they understand, so it's monthly, whether it's a town meeting, I want to make sure the residents nearby know this is what's happening, all right? So that answered my question.
Okay.
So thank you.
All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a, um, motion to approve the Excel complaint protocols and procedures.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right? All right, now it's going over to you.
Fun stuff.
All right.
All right, number seven, item Gen 17, discussion and vote of whether to approve the revised police chief job description. I want to thank Chief Abbott for his input. I want to know.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Lou. So at the last meeting, I presented you with a draft. I think there were three recommended changes. Before I get to the changes, the, the description you have in front of you reflects the duties that have been enumerated in the police chief's contract and successor contracts that were agreed to. Now with respect to the changes in the draft, there were two elements that were not consistent, actually, they weren't included in the previous iteration of the job description. So those, those now have been included and do reflect, truly reflect, all of the, the tasks in the contract. And then under Chapter 6E, 6E, which is the police reform bill, requires a police officer to have post-certification.
Yep.
So that is, that's been included. I think that rounds it up.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. That makes sense. I looked at, I looked up those things that were changed and I need to see what they were, so I knew what to speak of. You're right, it's one of those things that was revised recently, that needs to be in that description, so thank you for looking at that.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Yeah, I had to, I just had to go through the certification, so.
That means we can keep you around.
That's right. Keep you around for a little while. No, I don't see any issues with the revisions. It helps us determine the qualified candidates, so any discussions, any questions?
Nope. Straightforward to me.
Yeah. Chief Abbott, you have anything further to say, any...
Just respectfully request you vote to approve it, and then I'll make the necessary changes in our data system to reflect today's date.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, that's it. I entertain the motion to approve the revised police chief job description.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Gen item number 18, discussion vote whether to approve the revised fire chief job description. Representative here as well. Please come on down.
I don't think Gary's out here. I think, I think we should have...
I think it's revised, or just...
Yeah, I don't think it's revised, I think it's just...
It's new.
Is it revised? Yeah.
I don't think it is revised, is it? I don't know that we had one.
We didn't have.
We didn't have.
Yeah, I don't think we had one last time.
We could find, we couldn't find one, so we took them from other towns, and Chief Sylvia has looked at it.
Yeah. And this is extensive range of job functions, that's, it's a lot of work. So I don't see any issues with the revised fire chief job description. Unless somebody else has any, any questions.
Nope. Looks good to me.
All right. That said, I entertain the motion to approve the revised fire chief job description.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so next, sorry. Come down.
All right. Well, 19, it's along the same lines from both the 17, 18s, determine qualified internal candidates for chief police and fire chief. So, we've received a list from Chief Abbott, 26th, regarding police chief, and similar dates from fire as well, for the fire chief. Just don't see any issues with this, you know? Let's provide the names of the people that are with qualified meeting the...
I guess I have one question. Is the lieutenant, he's retiring though soon, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so he'll be retiring in August.
Yeah. Okay.
And I've had extensive conversations with him, and he's, he's not interested.
Understandable, understand.
He's got plans.
Oh, so should we name our...
You can't, I mean, you can name them, there's just going to be no discussion about them, or something, or anything at this time.
Okay.
So, the two individuals that Chief Abbott has proposed that we, that are eligible for inter-departmental personnel are Lieutenant Steve Abbott, which we just discussed, retiring in August of next year, and Sergeant Scott Rose. All right. I look forward to speaking with them, or one, depending on what they say. I don't think any votes required.
Nope.
And the same thing with the chief, the fire chief. He sent us Harry Ashley as the new fire chief, when Chief sort of retires on, on or about January 2nd of next year. So, I don't, I think that's a great fit, which is there as well.
Perfect. All right.
Great. All right, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
All right. Moving along. Discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. We have four appointments, so I'll say them all, and you want to do them individually or all say them?
I do them all once.
All once?
They're all the same. Right, oh, no. Not at all. But yeah, you can just say them all, then we can, then we can remove them all.
So A is Matthew M. Bones as Communications Signal Operator, Park Time Trainee, effective 10/10/2022 through 6/30/2023. B, Cheryl B. Quinlan as Recording Clerk for the Economic Development and Building Committees, effective 10/4/2022 through 6/30/2023. C, Vanessa Blanchett as Recording Clerk, Economic Development and Building Committees, effective 10/4/2022 through 6/30/2023. And D, Melissa Frappery as Payroll Coordinator, 10/5/2022 through 6/30/2023. We interviewed most of these, and they were excellent, excellent candidates, so I'm glad they all said yes to the proposal, and it's, it'll be a great asset to the town. Any questions, concerns, counts? All right. That's it. I entertain a motion to approve 20A, 20B, 20C, and 20D for the following positions, as so, so said.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 21, discussion vote whether to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the Town of Freetown and Patricia Rodrick. All right. Any questions, concerns on this, little discussion? This has, I believe this has to do with the amount of sick leave, right? Sick leave?
Yeah.
Based on...
Some reason, the contracts that got executed last summer, while there was, I don't think there was a TA in place prior to me coming in, and they're varied quite a bit, and as a department head, she was only allotted five sick days, where the union gets 12 sick days. So she asked to be treated similar as a union employee, which is a typical thing department heads get, what, you know, at least what the union gets, so...
That makes sense to me.
That's the change, is that she then gets the similar sick time, and our sick time, personal time is combined, same, same as the union would get.
Okay.
Yeah. So this brings her back to where everyone should be.
Yeah, that makes sense.
A standard of, of everybody's, everyone's contract, so. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the MOA memorandum of agreement between the Town of Freetown and Patricia Rodrick.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So 22, similar, discussion vote whether to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the Town of Freetown and Lola Fratato. So this is similar, but not, not for sick leave, mostly for pay. Lola's been doing a phenomenal job, like, so has Luanne and Devin, that office is busy. And, and Lola has done everything from learning how to operate the camera to website, gosh, if I told her to do the oil change, she probably would figure it out and do it. So this is just increasing her pay to the next step in the, in the process.
Because again, she was being paid less than the senior corps in the union.
Yeah, so it's a 2% increase, right? 2%, you're, you're 2% increase, which is, is the least we can do.
Just brings, sort of in line with the senior corps, somewhere that are at.
Yeah.
And just a little bit above that, but...
I have no problem with this?
No. Excellent. In that case, I entertain the motion to approve the MOA memorandum of agreement between the Town of Freetown and Lola Fratato.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. 23 is tabled for another time, which is the discussion we were going to have earlier, but...
All right.
That'll be for another day.
Perfect.
Well said.
Thank you.
So...
Yeah, we can do...
So I just wanted to mention, under some, you know, we went, myself and Kenberg, and there's, we went to look at the pods in Lakeville.
Okay, the pods, as, as like a temporary situation?
Yeah.
Or temporary solution somewhere, building?
Yeah. The classroom pods, and they were really impressive, what, you know, what they saw, they, and I saw them all, so, I don't know, the board know that we went there, we looked at them, as possible, yeah, affixed to the critical needs of the COA. So they have gone to their board, and the board, the COA boards onboard, with possibly looking into purchasing or leasing a pod to alleviate their space needs, so just sort of let the board know.
Yeah, I mean, that, that sounds awesome, that that could work, especially, also, it's just good to know, we have some buildings that are potentially, if we get in the wrong storm, you know, we could be in some trouble, so I'm happy to hear that that could be a potential solution.
Yeah, so we're gonna keep...
For other problems we have too.
Continue working on that and bringing more back to the board, but I just wanted to tell you that we did that, and we may be taking another visit out there, so we'll, we'll let you know when that is, if the selectmen like to look at them.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's, I think that's it.
Has the prices changed at all, from the leasing to owning?
So it looks like, I mean, it's expensive at first glance, like, it's, I want to say that to lease it for two years was $120,000, but that, that's given, like, they have a bathroom in them, they clean out the bathroom, there's, there's things to that. If you were to purchase it, it's running around $250,000, and I'm waiting for that quote to be written, he, he vaguely gave me that quote, but it's $24,060. It's a good-sized space, and, you know, if, if, we, we could probably attach it to the existing building.
They're all temperature-controlled, like they have, like...
Yeah, they have heating and air conditioning, electricity, it's a classroom, it's like this room.
I mean, I remember before the, the, Flem, or Freetown, Lakeville, I'm, I'm confused how, the schools have changed a lot since I was there, but we used to have pods at Grams, and those weren't actually very nice, but that was a long time ago.
You know, their, their biggest complaint is that they just don't have an open space, right? The downstairs is open, but there's lorry columns.
Yeah.
So they, they struggle to maneuver, to do any kind of yoga class, or different things that they like to offer the seniors, they can't do.
Do they have natural light that comes in them too, like, windows?
Yeah, it has windows.
Is it craned in, or do they build it in place?
So it's like on a trailer. Just comes in on wheels, and then it just, it's set down, so, like I said, we're just in the process of looking further into it, getting the quotes. One of the suggestions was we lease it for a year, and because it takes, if you're going to purchase it, it might take 10 months to get it, but then you can kind of design it the way you want it, right? But they're pretty nice, I'm not going to lie to you, for an option, I, I know it sounds like it is a lot of money, but equal to trying to build that size, it's cheaper, right? Because everything is just so expensive in municipal construction projects. So it, it may be a way, you know, they're, the seniors, you know, have come before you in different petitions, trying to get space now, get space now, get their building now, get their addition now, and so I was trying to find a way to sort of put out the fire with their, with their, with their critical needs.
Their right now needs, I get it. I, yeah, sounds awesome if it works out.
You know, that's kind of where we're at, right? I'm trying to, we're trying to address critical needs and also the long-term needs.
Yeah.
So I just want to let you, let the board be aware of that, that we're not there.
And it could be for other options too, right? Like moving forward, you're working on it with this particular thing, but it could be for something as far as Town Hall or library, right? You know, so there's, there's other options.
Right. And if you purchased it, you could, when we, when we build a new building, you can maneuver it, right? You can use it for maybe storage that we have a problem with, right? Or maybe the, you know, nobody really discusses the highway bond and their needs, that they're just, there's, and I don't know whether they have needs or not, but it's, it could be what that they needed, I don't know, right?
Yeah. Charlie, I should, you know? We're short on space across the board, so...
Every department, every, other than this building, the police, every department needs something.
Well, the good thing about having something like that is, sounds like we can move it around if needed, down, like, say we stay there for five years, that's COA, then we build a new building, and then we needed to renovate Town Hall, move people in, since we located somewhere else, so that might be a good swing space while we update other things that have been neglected over the years. So that might be...
That makes sense.
That might be the way to go.
Yeah, so I just kind of want to introduce you to that, that's what's going on, like, I know they're going to be interested in moving forward, so we'll probably set up a meeting with the Building Committee, and then get back to the selectmen.
And I wonder if we could push the company a little bit with, with this lead time to get the unit, right? If they'll give us a reduced rate for the rent on the, the other unit, if they know we're going to purchase one.
Have, I know you've reached out to them, have they gotten back to the last accurate number? Yeah, so we're, we're betting on that, trying to get all the information we can get, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so we're just going to sign documents now, and then we'll adjourn.
There you go. Worked well.
Got to use the wax.
It's all funny, you can show up with the handlebar.
It's great, the ARPA money.
What's that? That's great, the ARPA money. When I was looking at the agreement signed last time, you know, was it the fire chief?
Attention.
You have attention, so I reached out to Chief, that's what I have. Is this...
Attention, headed?
I don't know where they go.
But they're usually, they change their, like, suit.
Three candidates, these guys.
Yeah.
This lady right there, she's got, we got, we got a place for her somewhere. She was shooting rocks up.
I'm trying to, I want to identify, I'm trying to...
I'm always pro education. Yeah, I get it.
I'm signing that, I don't know if I should, I guess, you guys.
Am I also down here? Just up there.
No.
Did you, were you able to get onto the Zoom call, the Zoom for the book program?
Yep.